I am Jane Callahan, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, The Rochester Post Bulletin, The Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a league, do take study and take stands on issues, we never support or oppose political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an educational opportunity to hear candidates discuss, face to face, issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from the League of Women Voters Rochester, The Post Bulletin, The Chamber of Commerce, and members of the live audience, plus questions that were submitted earlier. You are welcome to submit as many written questions as you'd like on the note cards provided. Just hold up the cards as you finish them, and a volunteer will collect them throughout the forum. If you are watching the live stream, you may email questions to lvwrochester@lwvmn.org. All questions are reviewed by League of Women Voters volunteers. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Given our format, your questions must relate to both candidates. Questions that fall in the same general area may be consolidated to allow the moderator to cover as much as possible during our short time. We appreciate questions that are forward-looking rather than of the past. If an answer is unclear, feel free to submit a follow-up question or contact the candidate after the forum. Cards become the property of the League of Women Voters Rochester. As there is never enough time to cover all the issues in our limited time and setting such as this, we may not get to all the questions submitted. Please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office, for offering to serve your community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage all each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features candidates for the Rochester City Council member representing Ward Four. The candidates are Kelly Ray Kirkpatrick and Andy Fredericks. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance and here tonight. Candidates will have one minute to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer. When your time is up, you may finish your sentence, but then you must conclude your answer. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per person, per question, excuse me. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. And you may have to call my attention to the fact that a rebuttal card is up. You can poke me if you need to. I would like to remind the audience to remain silent during the forum, hold your applause until the end of the forum, and to turn off all electronic devices. The timekeepers tonight, our League of Women Voter Rochester members Jan Strad and Ashley Neerling. Thank you. Questions will be screened by League of Women Voters Rochester's members Kathy Mageline and Dee Voldahl. Thank you. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from The Post Bulletin and Jonathan Krull from The Chamber of Commerce. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine the order of their opening and closing statements, and candidate Kelly Ray Kirkpatrick will speak first.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Kelly Ray Kirkpatrick, and I am currently your Ward Four City Council representative. Thank you for electing me to represent you in Ward Four in 2020. Your engagement in our community is crucial, and we need more folks involved in the deeper work of creating a thriving community. Campaigning for a city council position in one of Minnesota's fastest-growing cities and most economically thriving cities, and doing the work if elected, is no small task. Our city has achieved remarkable milestones: the largest ever property sale in the state, hosting the largest employer, and the $6 billion investment we're about to see through the Mayo Clinic. Despite being the third-largest city in population, we are a city of great firsts. Ward Four is the most diverse and complex ward in our city. Many of the actions that we see in our city take place here in Ward Four. As your representative, I listen and work compassionately, voting for what is best for Ward Four and all residents. Voting in city council meetings is certainly the most visible thing that I do, but the best work is done when I'm out in the community engaging with you and having conversations. The phone calls, texts, emails, and visits that I receive show you that you are engaged, show me that I am listening to you, and that what happens in our city is important. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you. I hope to earn your vote again and continue our work for a second term.
Thank you. Andy Fredericks.
Thanks, League of Women Voters, for hosting tonight, and everybody that's here in the room to support us. It's good to see all the friendly faces. The purpose of these debates is so you can make an informed decision on November 5th. One important question to ask yourself is, what do I want from a city council representative? My name is Andy Fredericks. I grew up in Minnesota on a family farm. At nine years old, we lost our first family farm, and we were homeless for about a half a year. We had to restart in Barnesville, Minnesota, and my parents still live on that farm. We grew up poor, and we scrambled to make ends meet our whole time growing up. It was not a pleasurable experience in our household, although we stuck together and we saw it through, and today my parents are doing pretty dang good, and they're living on the family farm still in Barnesville. We received help from many great people through the years as we struggled, several organizations, churches, and our local government. I married young at 18 and set off to go to school with the help of Clay County, Minnesota, and Job Service. They helped me pay for my school, and at 19 years old, my wife and I purchased our first business. At 30 years old, we moved to Rochester, and we started in business here. We have built out 200, over 200 affordable housing options in this community since then, and we're very proud of that. We work closely with both city and county governments in those processes. We've received the Mayor Medal of Honor for Business and Industry for cleaning up the old Civic Inn and turning it into the Parker Apartments. We also received the Distinguished Service Award from the Rochester Police Department for our work on crime. Our buildings collectively had a... That's very distracting. All right. So, one building alone had 365 cop calls a year. We had several other buildings that had more. We had about 500 a year. We've went to zero. That's substantial. That's a big difference. All right? I'm a doer. I think it's important to have a leader that digs in and gets the job done. Politics can be a lot of fluff and talk. You won't get that from me. If you want, if you want your vote to count on November 5th, vote for Andy Fredericks.
Thank you, candidates, for your opening statement. Now we will have the first question from the League of Women Voters, and candidate Fredericks will speak first, and then we'll reverse as we go. And if I goof up, you let me know, okay?
I'll let you know.
Thank you. The question is this: According to the recent ALIS study released by the United Way of Olmsted County, one of every three households in our county is unable to meet their basic needs, which may include housing, food, childcare, transportation, healthcare, and technology. In what areas will that information impact how you make decisions?
That's, that's what this whole job's about, is our community and our people. We have some great programs in place in this community. We need to ensure they have the resources to continue the services they're providing. With that said, I obviously have a special place for people in need. Being homeless for, for a half a year in my youth, I understood what it was like to have to humble yourself to the point to have to ask, and making it easy for these people to come forward to ask for the help they need, because a lot of people live in shame for that stuff. Making it easy for them to approach whoever that said program may be is very important. So I guess I'd call it port of entry to that, to the help they need. I witnessed, as I volunteer at the landing, I witnessed them doing great things there with people in severe need, and one of the neatest things I witnessed them provide is they provide a place for them to keep their personal belongings. I'm going to stop. I have to stop.
Thank you. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. According to the recent ALIS study released by the United Way of Olmsted County, one of every three households in our county is unable to meet their basic needs, which may include housing, food, childcare, transportation, healthcare, and technology. In what areas will that information impact how you make decisions?
Thank you. The decision-making process that we have on the council involves so many factors. Thirty percent of our population here in the city of Rochester falls below the 60% AMI income line, and that is increasing. Channel One Food Bank has seen a 70%, 70% uptick, and the folks that are visiting the food bank to get more food to establish greater food security. Inflation rates are up. Incomes have not kept up with the, the, the pay rate has not kept up with inflationary rates, and as we move forward into a future where there's going to be more technology, where we have a growing city that is going to see more jobs, it's going to be really important to be able to address the needs of more instead of the few.
Thank you. The next question is from the chamber, and it will be addressed first to candidate Kirkpatrick.
With the city budget in mind, what would your top priorities be to secure Rochester's long-term financial stability? And what specific actions would you take to encourage that fiscal responsibility and strengthen the city's financial resilience?
Our city has had a AAA bond rating for over 50 years now, and that is a luxury that we can afford to be able to use bonding projects to come forward to help build our city, help folks, and to go ahead and achieve some of the goals that we have. However, the LGA, I think, is the most significant change that we've seen with our city budget over the course of the last several years. We have about 10% of the monies coming to us that some of our other large cities have in the state that are on the decline with population versus our high increase. I often wonder if that decline is coming from the great growth that we see from one of our largest employers and one of our largest economic drivers, the Mayo Clinic. Mayo Clinic has been quite philanthropic with the Rochester Public School District, and I would like to see more of that happening across other sectors in our city. It's important that this great empire does not forget about the people's backs who helped build that empire.
Thank you. Candidate Fredericks.
Go ahead and repeat the question, please.
With the city budget in mind, what would your top priorities be to secure Rochester's long-term financial stability? And what specific actions would you take to encourage that financial responsibility while also strengthening the city's financial resilience?
Empower our businesses. Diversify our business landscape in the community. Mayo is obviously an awesome employer, an awesome asset to this community, but make it easier for small businesses to get started in this community, to give us some character, give us some, you know, we have, our look downtown's quite, you know, sterile in some ways. You know, give it some character, give them some freedom to operate in a space and bring some personality to our city. Small business is a huge asset to community in providing all different avenues of, you know, entertainment, services, and so on. So I believe in empowering and making it easier for the port of entry of all business owners.
Thank you. The next question is from The Post Bulletin.
Protecting neighborhoods is often stated as a goal by council members and candidates. What actions should the city council consider to protect neighborhoods?
For candidate Fredericks first.
All right. Listen to them, talk to them. It's very easy to figure out what the, what the community wants by engaging with them. When I was going door-to-door, the people that were on the, maybe the fringes of substantial growth, they did express their concerns, and it was, it was enjoyable to listen to them and meet them where they were at. You know, what, what might burn in somebody's belly here may not over here, and, you know, it's, it's not going to be a surprise if we're anywhere near the downtown corridor that there's going to be growth. So what are we doing to prepare for that? What are we doing to prepare our citizens for that? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And now candidate Kirkpatrick.
Neighborhoods are so incredibly important. I was elected to the Eastside Neighborhood Association president as president in 2018. I loved it. In that role, listening and collaborating and working with my neighbors, I understood what a hyper-local form of government can do. One of our organizations here underneath the city is Our Neighbors, Neighborhood Resource Center. There is funding through that area, there is engagement through that area, there is projects that work to help plant trees. Getting involved with your neighborhood is one of the best things that you can do. If you do not have a neighborhood association, I suggest that you form one. Neighborhoods are the backbone of any community, and here in Rochester, they are especially strong, and preserving them and listening to their needs is very important.
Thank you. The next question comes from an online person, and it goes first to candidate Kirkpatrick. What experience do you bring to the task of managing the large budget of the city of Rochester?
Well, first and foremost, I bring the experience of being the Ward Four representative for the last three and a half years. However, that is fairly new. I have not grown up in an area or worked for most of my major work life in a large organization or in a bureaucracy. I am a small business owner and have been for almost 30 years. I've been a single mom, and I too, like Mr. Fredericks, had a bout of homelessness in my life as a single mom. Lean management, learning to live without, with less, learning to collaborate with your neighbors, ask for a hand up when you need to. Those are some of the most difficult things when you're down, when you're out, and managing a city budget comes easy when you're collaborating with your colleagues on the dais. It is not just up to me. It is up to the seven of us to make that vote, to work with the staff, to listen to the voters, to understand how it is we can move forward with a sound budget.
Thank you. Candidate Fredericks.
Yeah, we started out in our life dealing with a very small budget, how we're going to make $30 or $20 last, and we've been fortunate enough to work up the ladder and do multimillion-dollar projects in Rochester. And for us, if we make a sidestep or we make a mistake or a spending error, the project fails. And honestly, it's your pride in that project that gets hurt the most in that situation because you don't want to let down your community and the people watching you. So it's important to be fiscally responsible, to weigh things out, weigh, weigh reward versus risk, and, and so on. So we've worked with large budgets on every project we've done, and we've worked hand-in-hand with the city on those projects, so, and the DMC for that matter. They, they helped us a little bit on our last project where we were required to do a $200,000 railing upgrade that we weren't planning on. So you work through these things, and you do it by working collaboratively with the people around you, like we do on the city council and every other thing we do in life for that matter.
Thank you. The next question will go first to candidate Fredericks. It is an in-person question. With the current council funding a study to put forth a strategic plan for the library, would you support a tax increase to allow the library to keep up with the needs of Rochester's growing population?
First of all, I support the library. Second of all, I'll never run into a tax increase without knowing all the facts. Nobody, nobody on the campaign trail when I was knocking on doors said, you know what? I can't wait till they raise taxes next time. Not a single person said that. So what I'm going to say is, if it's a need, absolutely. If it's something that's going to keep our community on the cutting edge of technology and education, yes, that, that's, that's important, but we always have to weigh it out. We have to weigh out our needs versus wants and so on, and, and having a good library is super important. It, it supports the whole community, everybody. My wife was very good at bringing our kids to the library, God bless her. You know, she taught them the value of the library and reading at a very young age. I don't know that I would have done that as well. So, once again, a collaborative effort, right? So that's what I got.
Thank you. The next question is from the Rochester Chamber of Commerce, and it goes first to...
I think Kelly wants to answer.
Oh, you have, I'm sorry. I knew I would do this at least once. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. That was a lovely answer. Very, very good. You, you, we were both nervous, but you, you did really well on that one, and I have to...
They didn't even give us water.
I, I brought some, but I left it back there. You want some?
I could really use some water.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we're on that.
So, so basically, his answer was pretty much spot-on. We need to collaborate, and our wonderful library in 2018 won the National Medal for Library Science. Only five of those awards are given out every year. What a phenomenal agency this is. The people that are here, I think, are some of the most ethical and giving folks, and this organization works hard to support some of our least successful, some of our least economically sound folks in our community. Working together, the needs, need to address the funding that comes towards it, and listening to you all is the way that we would choose to tax, to improve our library, to keep it or to increase, increase the needs that it has.
Do you have the stop sign?
I got it.
Thank you.
I stopped.
And now the next question is from the chamber, and it will go first to candidate Kirkpatrick.
How would you assess the current business environment in both downtown and greater Rochester? As a city council member, what specific actions would you take to create a thriving economic climate that attracts and supports business growth?
That's a really tough one. I have watched the downtown businesses suffer immensely over the course of the last couple of years. I can appreciate the business need for the Mayo Clinic to move many of their employees to telecommuting, very efficient, very effective. However, when much of our businesses were reliant upon a higher employee population downtown every day, we're seeing issues. There's a lot of unrented properties still happening in downtown Rochester. I too often hear, there's no parking downtown. I don't know where to park. There is a plethora of parking downtown. When we have an overbuilt situation on the south and the north end that is diverting stormwater because of all of the blacktop with all kinds of free parking and accessibility, where are we going to choose to go? There are many things that we can do. So the difference between the downtown business economy and the further-out suburban business economy is very, very different, and I think we need to pull up downtown significantly.
Thank you. Candidate Fredericks.
There is a definite advantage to a person being able to pull up in front of a business park and walk in. There is an advantage to that. To ensure business growth downtown, and actually, I don't even want to say growth, just stay in business, is give them the ability to expand their businesses and freely operate in their spaces. We need to be mindful of taxation, being careful not to tax, tax business owners to death and out of business, especially small business owners. Okay? Number one thing we can do for the business community is engage with them. Go in there and talk to them. It's funny how much we sit back and we come up with all these great ideas, but we don't engage with the people that it's affecting the most. It is a super simple thing to do, to just walk in there and talk to them. They are delighted to just talk to another person about their business and concerns. It's fun. It's a lot of fun. I find business very interesting, and that is one thing I look forward to doing. Stop.
Thank you. The next question is from The Rochester Post Bulletin for candidate Fredericks first.
One of the city's three strategic priorities is affordable living. Aside from creating, the creation of affordable housing, what should the city do to address the cost of living in Rochester, and how would you seek to achieve that goal?
Talk to the developers. Developers have a lot of ideas. They can give you the ideas and the, the skinny on what it takes to get there. The reality is things are expensive in this community. Land's very expensive. The cost of getting a project put together is very expensive. I'll tell you this, the workshop, food hall, and bar that we developed three, four years ago, we had $125,000 into just plans and fees and development just to repurpose an old building. Why? Why? So if we're going to have help businesses and stuff, let's help them. Let's not talk about it. Let's not put up roadblocks. Let's help them. I, I could get real passionate about this. You want me to keep going? Okay. Let's go to, we just finished, we're just finishing our opening and affordable housing unit, 43 units. It went $600,000 over budget because of all the things that they came in and told us we needed to do. It sat there and operated for 60 years, just the way it was, just fine, but all of a sudden when we went in there and did it, you got to do this, you got to do this, you got to do that. Do we? Do you want affordable housing? She says stop. I'm going to listen.
Thank you, candidate. And now for candidate Kirkpatrick.
Sorry about that. We all need to have enough profit at the end of the day to be able to meet our needs. That includes developers. With increasing budgetary constraints due to supply chain issues, inflation, developers are finding it more and more difficult to provide affordable housing. Affordable housing, however, means that we all have affordable housing, whether you're making $50,000 a month, $5,000 a month, or $500 a month. It's quite obvious that when you are building housing for some of our lowest-income folks, there is much less profit margin. It's much easier to build for at-market rate or higher-market rate housing than it is to build for low income. We need to work together to look at some different models, where there's mixed use, where there's low income and high income together. Some of those units can be purchasable, such as condominiums, as well as rentals.
Thank you. The next question is from a person in the audience, and it goes first to candidate Kirkpatrick. Describe your leadership style and how you would work effectively with co-council members and city staff.
Thank you. I always try to take an appreciative inquiry stance. I think sometimes we tend to make far too many assumptions. We mix words up, we don't listen to words carefully, and when we take an appreciative inquiry stance, we can understand somewhat more deeply what someone is trying to say or what their concerns are, or getting to the root cause of what we're discussing and talking about. I can be a bit of a Sherman tank at times and be quite pushy and quite assertive, but I only do that if it's necessary, and there have been times that it's been necessary to do that. But the key to collaborating with my colleagues on the dais is listening and caring for what they have to say and working together to make sure that the outcome is the best for everyone, not just what I want, not just what my ward wants, but moving forward for everybody.
Thank you. Candidate Fredericks.
I want to hear the question again, please.
Okay. Describe your leadership style and how you'd work effectively with co-council members and city staff.
My leadership style is, is ask Carrie what she thinks. That's my wife. Okay. So we have, we have very specific roles in our home, and, and there is the same thing in the city. There's very specific roles, and my leadership style is very straightforward. It's listen, collaborate, digest, decide, execute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And I'm, I'm going to ask an online question now, new topic, and it goes first to candidate Fredericks. If elected, please describe where you are with respect to supporting public environmental sustainability and carbon reduction projects and why. If you are supportive, what might be one such project you might advocate for?
All right. Obviously, I support sustainable energy. We are working as a city right now on solar and wind energy. That's a great start. We need to be stewards of our land. We need to care and continue to make sure, make efforts towards clean, safe, affordable, and reliable energy, and I believe we have a great man at the helm, RPU. His name is Tim McCullough. I've visited with him, and the guy is infinitely smarter than I am. So I trust him. I would take his lead and continue down the path he's taking us on because he is doing a great job of addressing all these avenues. I think, I think, once again, I think it's very important we're stewards of our... I think, once again, I think it's very important we're stewards of our natural resources.
Thank you. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. The number-one rule in ecology and biology is that you don't kill the host. We live on a finite resource planet, yet our population continues to grow. We continue to build more, and we continue to take and consume more on a daily basis. One of the biggest things I think that we can do for our community is to plant more trees. Although I appreciate the fact that we are going to incentivize EV chargers in our lower-income neighborhoods, in lower-income parts of the city, I don't think that's a good idea. People need food on the table. People need to be able to pay their utility bills. They need to be able to pay their rent and purchase homes. EVs are not purchased by some of our lowest-income folks anywhere in our country or globally. Folks that are having a higher income can access some of those things better than some of the folks that are poor. Being able to acknowledge where we need to go energy-wise is being done by RPU, and I definitely think their efforts are great, and we can move forward soundly that way.
Thank you. The chamber now has a question for candidate Kirkpatrick.
In addition to the high costs of development, many businesses have raised concerns about the complexity and length of time involved with Rochester's zoning and permitting processes. How would you streamline these processes to encourage business development while also maintaining community standards?
The new UDC has been put in place for a little over a year now, and we adjust it on a yearly basis. We adjusted it once in the first six months, but staff is working hard to collaborate more with our developers and our builders. DMC steps in to do an awful lot of good help, too, for developments. And TIF is certainly one way that can help developers, however, with an application that can be changed or moved further down the road to adjust units and things. It can really help the developer as well when we vote to supply a housing development that otherwise isn't moving their empty spaces. It's important to know that staff and administration mostly deal with these issues, and we vote on them and collaborate with them to work towards, through the listening process with the developers, to make things more accessible for those folks that are actually putting housing and businesses in our city.
Candidate Fredericks.
Rules and regulations are in place for a reason. I don't want to be a know-it-all and come in and say, "You should do this, you should do that, this should be done, that should be done." A good understanding needs to be come to -- we're using this word a lot tonight, but collaboratively with the developers. We have some very good developers in this community that have done a great job, and they're intelligent people. And listening to them, I've gained a lot of knowledge. Now, listening to the people down at Building and Safety as we've been going through permit processes, some of the things that I thought could be expedited, you know, maybe they couldn't be. There is formalities that need to happen, and things need to be in place. I understand that. And one of the things that's, you know, real important, one of the things that takes a while is there has to be a neighborhood meeting. Well, it's important. You know, we have to be listening to the people in our neighborhoods and doing things that are cohesive with their homes and their home environments as well. So it isn't something we can just fast-track and all of a sudden be making mistakes, but obviously, I'm the number-one advocate for making things as efficient as possible. And by that, I mean financially and the speed of the process.
Thank you. The next question is from Rochester Post Bulletin, and it goes to candidate Fredericks first.
Is there anywhere specific that you see a need for additional spending on recreational amenities and programs?
I am a fan of youth athletics, mainly youth athletics. It is a great outlet for kids that maybe are less fortunate, middle-of-the-road, and high, you know, high-income households. It keeps them out of trouble. You know, the more activities a kid can have in the, you know, the sports world, the art world, the entertainment world, anything that's positive is learning and enriching. I'm all about it. That's what part of being a community, and that's the reason we pay taxes, is to provide these opportunities, mostly especially for our young children. You get them past that 18-year-old point with getting into some real, let's just call it sidestepping, things that are distracting, the odds of them being successful as a young adult are much higher.
Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Will you repeat the question, please, Randy?
Is there anywhere you see a need for additional spending on recreational amenities and programs?
Thank you. A couple of years ago, a referendum was voted on, 61% in favor of our parks for extra spending in our parks. Kudos to our park and rec department. They are the ones that are providing recreation at almost no cost whatsoever to a user except for through our taxing process. My children range in age from 23 to 33, and the youngest one is still at home because he can't afford to move out. Things in our community are so incredibly expensive. We have phenomenal restaurants, and he can't afford to eat out at them because they're expensive. We have a lot of things that cost a lot, but you can do a heck of a lot of wonderful recreation and sports activities in our absolutely beautiful parks here. And any way that we can speed that up, increase that for our community, for our young folks and families that can't afford to get their children involved, I applaud.
Thank you. The final question is from the League of Women Voters. We go to candidate Kirkpatrick first. Okay. How will you work with the community and the police to promote public safety throughout the city?
Public safety is really key. We need to keep our neighbors in mind in almost everything that we do. Walk the sidewalks, greet your neighbors, share something with them when they move in. Bake a zucchini bread, for crying out loud. This time of year, there's a ton of zucchini out there. Share who you are and invite them to share who they are with you. That is one of the best ways that I think we can keep an eye on what's going on in our neighborhoods, next door to us, and to keep everybody safe. Our Rochester Police Department and the county sheriff do a phenomenal job, and they, as of yet, I believe, are not full-staffed. So we need to applaud those first responders from doing their work, and just get out there and get to know your neighbor so that when you see something going on, you can say something. As a foster parent, a couple of years ago, my nieces and nephews said that snitches get stitches, and I worked so hard over the course of the year and a half to tell them that what you should be doing is when you see something, you should say something.
Thank you. Candidate Fredericks.
We have worked closely with the Rochester Police Department for the last 12 years cleaning up problem properties. It's been a pleasure. They're great people. They have excellent leadership. Actually, I'll just share this. I'm friends with several of the fire department employees, and they're going to eventually need a new police or a new fire chief. And he said, "Give us Officer Franklin." That's a heck of a compliment. So I trust him. He came to the city council a few weeks, months ago, and asked for a camping ban rule. My opponent voted against it. I will not vote against our chief of police. I will not. I trust him. He's doing a great job, and he has the full support of his department. I know many of the guys. So if he needs something to help out his force, I will vote to give it to him.
Thank you. This concludes the question portion of our evening's forum, and now we are ready for the closing arguments. And according to that random draw, candidate Andy Fredericks will go first.
All right. Something's been burning in me since our last debate. It was the primary debate. When asked what our number-one priority, if elected, would be, my opponent stated "tree canopy within the city." My response, and I truly feel this way, it's the people of our community. That's my number-one concern. Another important difference between my opponent and I is I will not abstain from votes. The most important vote of the year is the budget. In 2022, my opponent abstained from the vote on the budget. I will vote. I will be informed. I will do my homework. And last, my opponent votes no on subdivisions, but yet says we need affordable housing. There is a shift. When a subdivision happens and it is built, the people in the lower-income houses or the lower-value houses shift into the middle and up the ladder. That's how it goes. That's how we get the affordable housing at the bottom to open up. Okay? I will vote yes on subdivisions. Saying yes to these creates exactly what I just talked about, more affordable options at the bottom. We need 900 houses a year in this community. There is currently 200 single-family homes being built. That's a deficit. Okay? Thanks for listening to me tonight. I can be reached at 507-993-6830, and make your vote count on November 5th and vote for Andy Fredericks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Candidate Kelly Rae Kirkpatrick.
May I have a rebuttal, please, for his clothing statement?
Well, you have your two minutes closing. You want an extra 30 seconds?
I would like to use one of my rebuttal cards to his closing statement.
Well, your closing statement is coming right now, so you can rebut during your closing statement, but maybe you don't want to do that. Okay.
No, I don't choose to do that. Thank you.
Timekeepers, we're on a 30-second rebuttal now.
Is that a change in the rules? That's a change in the rules, right?
So, okay, the rule is that you will do your rebuttal, and then if you feel that you were unfairly attacked, well, let's see, and it's up to the moderator to decide if you're attacked.
I think what she -- I think, well, she -- oh, yeah, you're rebutting a closing statement, not a question.
Yes. Is that allowed?
Only after the closing statement about something said in the closing statement, if it was something that misstated your record or seemed to be --
Let her rebut it. It's fine. Let her rebut it.
So do your closing statement first, and then if you have time to cover, to allude to what he said, and if not, if a moderator agrees, then you can, if you feel like that, you know, but again, it's more of a, if it was an unfair attack.
Yeah, it's an unusual -- we haven't really considered this. If you wish to speak for your closing statement, or you want to rebut because it's fresh in your mind now, right? So you could rebut, then do your closing statement, and then you are entitled to a rebuttal to her closing statement.
Sounds great.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, to clarify, I believe what I hear you saying, or what I heard during a portion of what you were just sharing, is I can have a rebuttal after my closing statement? Is that correct?
Well, I put it the other way because I think you want to respond to something that's fresh in people's minds, and then have your closing statement. But then your opponent has the right to rebut your closing statement.
Then I am going to choose to do my rebuttal to Mr. Fredericks' closing statement after my closing statement.
Very well. I will certainly agree with that.
Thank you very much. It's inspiring to see all of you here tonight united by a desire to make Rochester the best city that it can be. Rochester has changed significantly since I grew up here in just under 60,000 people to now over 120,000. How can we continue to grow at a pace we've seen in the last 20 years while addressing the issues and concerns of our residents, businesses, and our visitors? How will upcoming changes affect our future of Rochester and the lives and lifestyles of folks that make our city their home? Do we want the changes headed our way? Can we avoid them, or will we embrace them head-on? You all, the residents of Rochester, should answer these questions. Your voice is essential to ensure we build a thriving community. Thank you so much for the opportunity that you've given me for the last three and a half years. As your Ward Four Council Representative, I request your continued trust, respect, and support in this election cycle. I want to continue our good work together, making this community the best it can be, now and into the future.
And now for the rebuttal.
Thank you. Mr. Fredericks, I appreciate what you said. However, I'm going to correct you, some of that was out of context. I do vote no on subdivisions. We live in an extremely sensitive geological area. I was appointed by Governor Walz to the State Board of Water and Soil Resources, and I'm a bit of a soil and water geek, and many of the subdivisions that are going in really can profoundly affect our environment and future water usage. Just because we can do something doesn't mean that we should, and I think everyone should be more informed about where we're building in the city and why we're building in the city where we are building.
Thank you. Is there a rebuttal?
You bet.
Yes, 30 seconds.
And it wasn't a personal attack at all. I'm just trying to stick to the facts. If a subdivision meets all the requirements that are laid out before us, there's no reason we should be voting no.
Thank you. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you that the views, you, the audience, that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thanks to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Everyone, please remember to vote. If you have questions about your polling place, would like to see your sample ballot, or learn more about the candidates, visit vot411.org. To see this forum again, access the forums from the LWV Rochester website or the Rochester Public Library YouTube channel. The library and the LWV Rochester post complete unedited recordings of this forum on their websites. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of this forum may not be posted on candidate websites or social media or used for political purposes. Links to the LWV or Rochester Public Library recordings, however, are welcome. Good night, everybody. Please remember that the library closes at 8:00 p.m., and everyone needs to be outside by that time. But let's first show our thanks to the candidates. All right. [end of transcript]